...to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, in whose law the liberty and justice are.
And to, um, schedule your form, please. We have a form. Okay, and approval of agenda, change of sequence, removal of items?
None.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda, all in favor. I'm opposed. Motion to carry. Like to welcome our crowd members. It's good to see everybody. Uh, Jason, um, item number five, announcements.
So announcements, so I would like to introduce, we have two of our three new administrators here today. Leslie had a pre-planned overseas vacation, uh, prior to the process that she's on, but Bill of our show, our new high school principal Danielle Wilkie, our new director of student services. So, welcome to your first board member.
Good to have you here.
Okay, um, Yvonne, did you do, so celebration?
Yes, item, yes, item number six is celebrations.
And I have some people that need to get a shout out for this, like, so Karen, those of you that really were adamant about us doing the float, uh, at the last minute that had me stressed out, we did the school district Lucy's garden float. Uh, a lot of people came together and pulled that off in very short order. I thought the float was wonderful. We had a great turnout for staff. A lot of positive feedback from the community during the parade about the district and about, uh, having a float in there. And, uh, I thought, uh, things went really well. So thank you to everyone that was involved in the float.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good job.
Uh, question, um, first of all, I know we were handing out little fingers on Lucy's expectations. Any comments or anything from the crowd? Lucy's expectation was prominently on the photo.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear anything specifically. Actually, the comments I heard were just people appreciative of the school district is, you know, we talked about in a small town, the school district is a big part of the small community and vice versa. The main conversation was it was just nice to see the district involved in the parade again. And actually, a couple of folks reached out to me from some other organizations saying, hey, how do we get into the parade? Um, so I, I knew that because I advocated that. So I put a, that's what Chuck's open for next year, so. So that was the main feedback I got was just appreciative of staff, um, and the message being in the parade, in the party.
Okay, and I understand the vote for prize?
We won third place, yeah, and donated the fifty dollars into Lucy's Garden Fund.
Great. Under the pot.
That's it.
Okay, item number seven is our consent agenda items. The A, meeting notice certification, B, regular meeting and close session minutes, C, special meeting minutes, financial status, um, E, resignations, F, hirings, and G, the renewal of our W I A A membership. Are there any questions or comments from board members about any of those items? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I'll second your motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items, all in favor. I'm opposed. Motion to carry. Item eight, information-only items. We'll start out with A, the district administrator's update, which has two parts, Act Ten and the potential referendum information.
Act One?
Act, I'm sorry, Act Twenty. I'm, I'm like, right, right, I'm like...
So, uh, I, I did not do my slideshow today because we have the directory reports and more or less, these are the two items I was going to cover. So, Act Twenty, I just wanted to give the board a brief update. We did have our first series of letters trainings that took place. I know Krista and you were a participant in that. Um, I was there for a short time, but, uh, we have two more of those coming up. One later this summer and another one once the school year starts to meet that requirement. I would just circle back around. The training wasn't mandated. The training has to start by July of twenty twenty-five. Our staff, we just elected to begin the training now because we, um, we did actually receive our bookworms resources. Mary Lou has been sorting through the materials in the office. We have all that stuff in place that several staff wanted to get ahold of the materials to start planning. But the letters training started and will be completed that, um, early, it'll be late August, I think, we'll have the last, during professional learning days in August, we'll have that training completed for about probably eighty percent of our staff. And the ones who are missing some of those dates will be able to pick up dates. Um, but we will meet the parameters of having started the training by July twenty twenty-five. We'll, we'll actually be done with our training. And then any new staff in the future, the assumption is we'll be required to complete the training. And then we just pay per seat through season to have that happen. So that's my half rough update.
Questions, any questions for Jason about Act Twenty training?
So, do you see in the future that that becomes a required training for a teacher to graduate? Like, at some point, it doesn't, like, if it's required, then why isn't the expense of a district on, like, it's just a requirement? Just like you need to have your teacher's certificate, you also need to be certified in. Like, do you see the educational institute taking that at some point? Or even if someone came and had Act Ten, Twenty training, we would want to put them through ours because we're using this?
So they don't, so a couple of good, a couple of good ones. So number one, no. And I'm gonna tell you why. Typically, the Colgate institutions are about five years behind what's actually needed in public. So when we communicate, like, we have staff, like, teacher training, like, Krista and I, you and I have been doing this for a while, right? How much time did they spend in college preparing you for, like, classroom management and dealing with, you know, very little to, to none? So that's kind of been something for years. So this would be an example of, I doubt that they're going to address that need. The other thing is you cannot offer your own, you can't have a district trainer train your staff. They, it has to be done by one of the companies.
So, but if a teacher comes to our district and had Act Twenty training at their district?
That would, that would qualify. That would count.
Even if it's not our specific training?
Yeah, they have to have one of the, one of the trainings. Yep, and if they don't, we have to pay.
So at a certain point, any existing teacher is going to have this as a part of their, like, we aren't going to need to continue the training because everyone will have it.
This will be a big upfront cost, but once we get trained, it's gonna be likely that any new, brand-new, you know, the brand-new teachers will need to be trained. But I, I don't envision, like, this becoming a part of, like, when you graduate college, that you'd have some sort of training. I could be wrong and pleasantly surprised, but I don't anticipate that happening, at least not in the near future. So by that time, we're gonna have the majority of the work done and then it'll just be, much like with our active intruder training, like, you know, it's something that we go through with staff. Um, at the beginning, it was like a refresher every year, like, I would anticipate this being something similar to that. But we're gonna, you all have your lifting this year and early next year.
I have a question. Um, what has been the feedback from staff, just informal feedback?
I mean, it is really good. The first, the first training, it was very informative. It's all, the first one was a lot about the brain and the psychology of it. So that was how it started out. And she said the next one did deeper into how to implement some of the strategies. So, the first one was really more about the psychology behind it, so.
And, and Krista, don't, like, don't be afraid to disagree, but I think the general feeling from staff, at least most folks, like, philosophically agree with this. Like, this isn't like, this was like a paradigm shift for staff, but staff were kind of like, at least what, how I ran the room was, well, time, like, let's get going with this stuff. So that was the feeling.
Also down the road, you can have, um, from what they said, you can have staff trained to be trainers. So that's bonus to, for future.
Hmm, that's good. So, Cece told, or told us that?
I, someone said that was, a long way somewhere, yes.
Well, that would be, that would be good. That would answer that question.
Is this something that's gonna require annual training then? Or is this a one, kind of a one-time thing?
Once you're trained, you're, you're good.
Then you carry that along?
So even though the update, as soon as the updates come out, then there'll be some type of notification?
So this piece, Chris, that this letters training stuff, or like, there won't be, like, this is kind of that, like, she talked about, like, the, like, how, how the brain works, like, how to, and then how to teach this. So like, it isn't going to be, once you do this training, there, there may be updates, the requirements, but this specific training, like, there shouldn't be any
Right.
massive shifts to.
It's like foundational.
It is, it's, it's basic foundational on how do you teach kids how to read, like, how do kids learn, how do kids learn how to read? And this is like decades of research, so.
Any other questions for Jason about the reading training?
Yeah, we'll, when, when we have staff complete the training, we'll do a survey just to kind of get your feedback on what they felt went well. But they, I felt early on, it was like, I saw a lot of nodding heads in the initial group as they were talking about different components of this, so.
Good, good. Um, the potential referendum information?
So, here's where we're at, and this is gonna be related to, you know, when we get into F and talk about the global ratings. Um, if, if the board is going to make the decision that we are gonna look at an operational referendum, that would be the, the August meeting is our, to meet that seventy days prior. Um, you know, what you saw, and I don't want to steal the thunder of the S and P report when we get to it, but you, I'm sure many of you read through it, it's just affirmative what we're talking about. This isn't a matter of expenditures, it's a matter of decreased revenues. We got less money coming in and we've pretty much flatlined our cost increases and it's just, um, so we're at that stage. Um, I, I will just share a question that was asked during, uh, during the interview. Pam and I did the interview with the, uh, rating spokes. We were on there and they, I believe they said, well, what would you, what would you do? If you didn't go to referendum or if it didn't like, and, uh, my sort of answer was, I don't know. Like, I really don't know because seven hundred thousand dollars isn't, this wouldn't be reducing costs. Like, the, the majority of our costs are personnel, right? And we couldn't cut seven hundred thousand dollars and still have an effective educational process here for our students. That's the reality of it. So I said, I don't know. Well, that wouldn't be an answer I would stick with because eventually it would have to be, well, we'll explore. But the option is, is, and I think where they were getting at is are there areas that you can reduce costs? And I think then later in the project, we, we're doing that, like, we're cutting in areas that we can reduce. We, you know, we cut the budgets by ten percent at the end of the year. We're looking at those things. Um, but that's, you know, eighty-nine percent of our costs in the school district are personnel. So there's also much you can cut from the other end. So that's just, and, and I don't want to be all doom and gloom, but that's just the reality of the board. We've had this discussion, we all know this is just where we're at. There's a reason eighty-three percent of the districts in the state of Wisconsin have gone to operational referendum in the last decade. Um, you know, it's honestly, it's a bit astonishing we were able to, to stretch out as far as we have here without going back through those operational costs. So, so I, I would entertain any questions from board members, but we will probably get into some of that, definitely as a key discussion, but. So Pam and I would like to bring, oops, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Pam and I would like to bring, like, in preparation if, uh, for August, as we've kind of held off, we gave you those initial projections, Pam did during Budget One and Budget Two, um, of looking at, like, if, if we were going to decide, if the board does choose to move in that direction, is, do we want to keep a flat? So we, we had talked about the four-year non-rate current, did we want to keep a flat number for all four years? Or do we want to look at inflationary increases? Because I mean, we were at the Waskey presentation that said the worst thing you can do when you go to an operational referendum is not ask for enough money and account for inflation so that two years later, you don't have enough money, um, you know, to keep the doors open and do that, so. But I would entertain any questions from the board, yeah. And Pam, or Pam?
Okay, if there are any questions, we'll go on to item B, Lucy's garden update. You ready? Okay, okay. So we have a little presentation here. It might be right in front of you. Is that okay?
Can I see this?
Oh, you gotta introduce it.
Okay, yeah, okay, yes, yeah.
So I'm Karen Pearls.
I'm Christina.
Oh, I need to figure that out.
And, um, we're here to let you know what's happening out in the outdoor garden. So this is a well-deserved and much-needed project coming to Pittsville School District. It's a community park located at the elementary and the middle school. A garden and outdoor classroom built in the name of Lucy Doneta, who passed away in a car accident this past April. It'll be named Lucy's Community Garden and Outdoor Classroom.
Lucy is a person who appreciated aesthetics and functionality, thus in her memory, and inactive, and inactive effects between the head school, she lived in the Pittsville School to serve staff, and the Doneta family have planned to renovate the area of the school playground. What currently is five thousand, seventeen hundred square foot space will be renovated into a beautiful garden and outdoor classroom in Pittsville School.
Outdoor classrooms bring learning to life. An outdoor classroom is a space that brings learning outside and becomes a gathering place for students, teachers, and the community. It provides an opportunity to integrate nature into our school grounds. By giving students that opportunity to get outside and experience nature, they can help bring learning to life.
Um, elements of an outdoor classroom can include seating, the outdoor whiteboard or chalkboard, the zebras or pergolas, a musical area, gardens, greenhouse, um, natural features, trees and shrubs and greenery, fitness and balance elements, and lighting.
Why didn't we know that? Why is it a community garden and outdoor classroom garden? Because everyone benefits from learning outdoors, especially young people. In addition to that, the equal value of integrated programming are the health benefits.
Benefits from the outdoor, um, learning can include improved mood and happiness, enhanced appreciation for the outdoors through interaction, increased retention rate for subject material, lower school violence and bullying, and improved social skills, increased understanding of complex ecological concepts, incorporation of physical activity across subject areas, opportunity to get out of the classroom if the school does not have the funds to go on field trips, and community engagement for outdoor spaces.
This area can be used by our community and school in several ways. Um, it provides a safe and beautiful place for our community to walk, read, and relax, foster a sense of environmental stewardship and appreciation for nature, reduce stress, increase happiness, and positively impact mental health for students, provides hands-on learning opportunities, and improve social skills for students.
How our community and school can use this area and benefit communities continued. Our classrooms serve as, uh, bridge between school and the local community, collaborative projects, garden initiatives, and outdoor events foster a sense of community engagement, inviting parents and local organizations to participate in educational activities. This space will be open to the community and be encouraged, encouraged to be utilized.
So this is the vision. The garden will feature an outdoor classroom for students and staff. This area will also be open to the community to enjoy and utilize. The garden will include a gazebo, picnic tables, stone seating, and shade trees to encourage outdoor activities and projects. The garden will also include stained glass bench designed and erected in Lucy's memory and of course, Lucy's favorite plants and flowers throughout.
This entire area will be complete with low-maintenance shrubs, trees, perennials, and hardscape services so that there should be little to no cost for maintenance in this area for upkeep once it is complete. Our committee has done a lot of research at what some surrounding schools have done. Here are some pictures from the Marshfield Middle School's learning area. These first couple of pictures are paintings on their wall.
Different donors.
That's how they, um, showcase their donors. Here's a plaque from, I mean, I'm sorry, a bench from one of their students. This is their musical area. There's some writing on that book and just a seating area.
We really liked this area. This is the path that leads in front of the school. And as you can see, there's a lot of hardscape, so it's very low maintenance, hazardous, low maintenance, a lot of seating, um, uh, no wood, so that way these tables will last a very long time in that rot. Uh, even if you do treat wood tables over the hard winters in Wisconsin, um, it would be really hard over years of wear and tear on elements.
Again, just another area of what we were just looking at, different types of favors.
And this is the kind of like a classroom area that they kind of built up for the kids to sit on so that if they went to a lesson, they can have a different level of students and conduct some kind of lesson out there.
This is our favorite one, our light, our lighted path. Um, we're hoping that during football games when we have half of the community out there by the playground, that this will be visible with the lights and people will sit out there, the kids will sit out there and enjoy it.
Also bringing in some, like, the sculptures like that where it doesn't matter if that other gets to it because they're rusty and it's cool, so.
This was when they first started, so that's before everything was established, just showing us a little bit of what plants they picked. They obviously had a tree, certainly that's one of the things. That's just a close-up of the musical book. The seating area. Look at this. I think you have to, like, stay to go back and, and, so.
And this is the project area. Um, as you can see, it's in the back of the school, between the middle school wing and the four or five wing, so by the, um, by the football field. Um, so that's where the yellow area is there is. Right now, it is just grass, um, in that area. Uh, it's just, we've been, you know, there's really nothing back there and it's just an area we've been looking at for a while that we've been wanting to do something with.
And then this is one of the renderings that we created of the project, but one of the ideas that we came up with, how we would lay it out, we were thinking of adding a lot of trees, um, in the middle there, that square is, we were thinking of putting in the, um, the gazebo slash, um, pergola, and we were thinking it'd be approximately twenty feet by twenty-four feet. And then along the sides, the reason there's that large gap is we left about twelve feet from the walls to accommodate for any future, um, like, repairs, renovations, any sort of maintenance that would need to be done in the school building itself. So there's enough room for a pickup truck to go through.
We're working on fundraising ideas, sending out donation letters, finalizing a workday to clear the area. That would be our first stage.
Um, currently, um, as you maybe probably have seen already, started a Facebook page. Um, we don't need to point to that right now, um, but we do have a QR code. We've shared that with the community and that's the link for, I'm sure most of you see that.
And then how other people can help. So as the project is underway, monetary donations and pledges to this project can be sent to the Pittsville School District. Additionally, as excavation and paving will soon be underway, we are grateful for any equipment for our volunteers that can be provided for the project. And we said that people can help by donating money, materials, or some sort of service to the project, depending on what stage we are in construction.
The donations will help make our project a success and be used to accomplish this beautiful community garden and outdoor classroom for students to learn and for the community to enjoy. We are thankful for all the kindness and generosity and truly appreciate the support that we already have. Um, we hope that you will also continue to be a part of our efforts as Lucy's Garden, Community Garden, and Outdoor Classroom classes. Okay, you have any questions for us?
This is outstanding. There's a lot of thought when you put into something like this and I'm just kind of curious how it all originated. Did somebody come up with the idea, an individual or a team?
There's been, there's been, there's been many years that people have thought about doing an outdoor classroom and we've tried some things. Um, Hester, two years ago, we started out by, um, some money that we received and we got a little tin shed and we've got gravel and we put our little tin shed on there and within twenty-five hours we took our little tin shed and smashed it up next to the garage. So that was done. Um, but they've tried different things. There's also some, when they tried the outdoor classrooms the last time, they were able to get a grant and they bought some portable seating, I believe it's called. There's five different sets. So we also, once we get going, we want to buy a cart that teachers can check out and take the cart. And so not necessarily in the garden, but maybe if the garden is busy, then they could sit out there. But there's five different portable sets that they can use, and so we want to incorporate that too. We're hoping that with less screen time, we can get more people on board with these other things. Um, so it's, it's just been a, it's been an ongoing project, but no one really dug into it as hard as we are. So we just said this time, we're gonna make it go.
And then we're talking about that as when we put our green color together, right?
So you two have been talking about this for a little while now, kind of establishing what we've got here today?
We, yeah, yeah, I, oh, yeah, we, a year ago already, um, we were working on it and then, you know, the unfortunate thing happened. The, we wanted to do something for Lucy and we just thought, this is a really cool idea. Let's just honor her.
That's good. Very good.
I have a couple of questions. The first, do you have an estimate of, like, what dollar amount you're looking to raise?
No, and I wish I did. We have contracted a bunch of people. We're hoping to get some of the, um, contracts or estimates back so we can have some idea. We have a list of people that are hopefully going to donate. We have some companies that will donate the concrete. We already have a huge donation of the sand that can be the base underneath it. They said it's an animal supply. We just have to ship it. Um, we also have a matching fund. We had someone, an anonymous donor, already donate, um, five thousand and then we had, and somebody matched that for another five, so we already have ten. And, um, we have a pledge to go up to a matching fund of twenty thousand. So, um, it probably won't be an inexpensive thing. There's probably gonna be a lot of expense to it, but we're hoping if we do it in phases and we get the word out there and we can get people to donate their time and their talent. We're hoping that it happens as soon.
We've come to the realization it's going to be a phase, a many phases and that.
And all donations can go through the school district, so it can be a task deductible?
We're actually gonna start an activity column Pam and I talked about, um.
So it can be a task deductible gift that someone gives because it's going through the school?
Yeah.
And we have a letter, um.
Perfect, that's awesome.
That they can use for those purchases.
And then my last question is, I mean, thank you for sharing it with the board, but there isn't a slide that actually, like, is there something? Is there something we can do? Is there something that's helped? Like, is there an ask of us? Or is this just, you wanted to let us know a great thing you're doing and thank you for doing that?
Yeah, we definitely wanted to let you know. Um, we're just, like, looking for ideas. We're looking for people who you think we can contact. We just finalized the letter and we're hoping to get it out to people. Um, if anybody has any suggestions who we can call or who they think might be willing to donate at least materials, um.
And I think the committee wanted to make sure, because obviously we were in the parade and, and things were gonna start moving with the website, that the board was just informed that this was going on.
Yeah, for sure, yes.
Absolutely, and I'm gonna shoot that. And I just also wanted to know if there was an ask of us, right? Like, so thank you for sharing that.
Sure, yeah. I think one thing we all agree on, all the committee is, we don't want to see it stop this time. We want to follow through. We want to make sure it gets there. There's a lot of communities, there are a lot of schools that have the outdoor classrooms and I just think it's time our school had one, so.
And we want, we want the community to know that this is for them as well. We want, and we want it to be a space that the community is welcoming and it's.
And sometimes I see like a hundred kids out there during a football game running around and I, it's gonna be a really beautiful place.
And another thing that we also just brought up today was, so, um, I've been working on, then gathered the, um, the concrete bench for, bench for Lucy. Um, I was thinking of making one of the mosaic benches that we typically make, I'll just make one of those. And then we also found a wood bench from, uh, Kala. And we're thinking of bringing that out as well.
When I made the floor, I found it, so I was like, we need to bring Kala's back out as well.
Yes, yes, it'd be cool.
Thank you all for your work.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
But I need a question, so.
See you guys at the work night, baby.
Do you have, let me ask one other question. Do you have a timeline, even a rough timeline of, you know, like, when you're gonna kick it off? When fundraising starts, when fundraising ends?
The, the anonymous donor here would like to see at least phase one by school. When school is here, at least phase one, which would be the twenty by twenty foot, maybe not the pergola, but we're gonna have to make the stamped concrete area of the pergola bigger than that. So let's say maybe, what was it, thirty by thirty-five or something like that, the stamped concrete area? If that could be there so that we could get the tables, um, Mitch Holmer said he can pour us the tables. He can pour cement tables, which I thought was really good because those are not going to go anywhere. So if we could get the tables in that area so people knew that it was happening in phase one by the time school starts, that would be our hope.
Okay.
And we kicked it off by the parade and it was a very last-minute decision. It was like, you think we can get a boat ton in, in three days? And we're like, sure we can, so.
We have a lot of phone calls out right now that we're needing to clear back on.
Yeah.
And we meet, we've been meeting weekly now, so we meet next Monday as a committee, so.
Cause the group, the float, we're handing out flyers for the district and for Lucy's garden at the same time, so we got that out. Word is out.
Okay. I wish it was like some super easy way for people to donate money, like, I wish it was like some.
Like an online.
Edition, yes.
But I, I, I don't know what that would be or how, like, how it would be.
Well, we're just gonna see if we have a, have that anymore.
Do we have a square?
Like a, like, so they can have a line?
Do we have a square as a, as a school? No? Well, we do have a proud funding, so we could use a go-fund me from Chelsea. So we do have policy for proud funding.
Okay, oh, that's good. Good. We have a square back. That's exactly what you were doing.
I know, um, just an FYI, and I can send it to you, and maybe you already know, but Marshall Larry Community Foundation grant, just.
Um, just an FYI, and I can send it to you and maybe you already know, but Marshville Area Community Foundation grant just came open and it's for educational, like this fits. Perfectly and it's five thousand dollars.
Is that the one that we tried for the last time?
I don't know. I mean, we applied for it, it just came out, it's just in this stage, but it's anywhere between five hundred and five thousand.
Okay.
But their ideal of what you're looking for, like, matches perfectly with what you're applying for.
Marshfield?
Area Community Foundation. So it's the, it's the Marshville, it's encouraged only in Marshville.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, and it's, it's Stacy Schultz, sorry, but it just came out, so, yeah. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, I didn't see it, but we'll board goals. Um, traditionally, it's been practiced for, yes, the school district to have goals, but also for us, as a board. To have goals related to professional development or things we would like to accomplish. Um, last year, we had, I mean, we called it, we call it like retreat. I really dislike that term. Um, but we had a special meeting that was for development, we called it for development, okay? Where we actually gave out some ideas and some racing love to the community this year. Um, and I wonder how board would feel about having a special meeting for that, whether it starts school. To review what we set out to do last, this past year, um, and as well as to look at how we could build on that. And um, I'm forward to this coming here.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that suggestion. I think when, when we're talking about goals, like what we've been encouraging using data to drive decisions and goals, I think the board. Leading by example, I think having a separate meeting to evaluate, um, you know, based upon our strategic plan and our, the board goals and then look at if we need to make any modifications and look forward, so. I like that idea. Rather than doing it in a regular board meeting, having a special meeting just to focus on the goals.
How do others feel about that concept?
Is that something that maybe we can do early September or August as well?
Um, I think I, I, August or September would work, definitely not July, but possibly August or September. Um, and what we could do, in order to find a date, we could ask Jeff to send out a doodle calendar poll. Is there a day of the week that people prefer? Do you wanna stick with a Monday board meeting day or go with a different date?
Yeah, it's, it's, for me, it varies on the day, on the week.
I would think it'd be a couple hours.
Yeah. Uh, would you like to do, because I think like, I asked you, didn't we do it on a Saturday?
We had several evenings. So I'm thinking that was the first, I, I think we're, I think that was with Fran.
That could be.
So it wasn't, it was in the middle and during the previous school year.
Yeah.
And then I think we focused on our strategic plan after that, which was the board goals were like effectively a strategic plan is.
Right.
A set of district goals, but I think you guys had mentioned last year, I remember we were talking about having like. Some individual to individual development goals and then as a, a board as a whole, so I, I think it was the year prior that we actually did that.
Okay.
If memory serves me.
Yeah.
But we did it on, like, like in the evenings.
Yeah, I remember us sitting in this room and I remember where I sat.
It was a U shape with the administrators. I remember exactly.
Um, so should we, is there any week when people are on vacation that Jeff can just take off, take off the flight?
The week of the eighth is not August, it's not a good week.
August third to tenth, I'm going.
What about the middle of August? We're looking at the middle of August. The teachers, the teachers come back August twenty, twenty.
So it sounds like not the first two weeks of August. But sometime in the end for that. Any other, the week of the twelfth, the nineteenth, the twenty-sixth, are there any board members not available? Those groups.
The what?
The week of the twelfth of August, the nineteenth of August, and the twenty-sixth of August.
Those are the evenings that work for me on the weekends.
Just the beautiful, just those three, maybe those three.
Yeah, those two weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
What times are we looking at? Five, six, eight?
Six, eight.
We have a board meeting.
Rick just reminded us the regular board meeting is August twelfth, so it'd be the nineteen through the twenty-sixth.
Or if we want to go with another day of the week, that would be the other alternative.
I guess I'll leave it in Deb's capable hands.
Send, send a variety of dates.
And, yeah.
That sounds great. Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments on that at this point in time? Or if not, I think we're ready to move on to item D, which is our administrative staff annual reports. And I just. Dan is first.
Sorry to get my report to you kind of late. I was on vacation for a bit and I got to try to get something together for you. Um, I'm only gonna touch on just a couple of things that are on here. Uh, the first one would be that new sprinkler system. Very grateful that we got that put in last year because boy, does that make our job easier with doing the second project that we did on here. Um, if you look, there's a couple of pictures there. Pictures don't really do it justice. When you went out there and you saw it that first day when the guy was working, I shared a video with Jason. I tried getting it on here, but I'm not real proficient about getting a video hooked up to it. But it shows the machine as it went through and took this all out and then there was a huge pile of it in the parking lot. If anybody saw that when they came by at all. Uh, what this did is it, it took off that top layer of dirt, rolled it nice and flat and it actually took this down to. I, I wanna say there was, there was a little more than that there and uh, you can see that was the week they finished. That was today. And we actually have cut it twice now and the more we cut it, the more it's filling in and growing. So this is actually growing really great, but that sprinkler system, sprinkler system is now set up. And automatically we put it in the water one time at the beginning of the season, where before we used to have to take it in and out every day if we use it. Um, I have watering starting at six o'clock in the morning and by nine thirty in the morning, nine forty-five, it's usually done. It's watering, it goes by sections, so if you ever see it, it looks like it's only watering one spot, it's still what it's supposed to. There's fifteen different sections that's watering. Cause there's no way with the water capacity, we need to do it all at one time. I could turn on at one time, the pipe would have to be this large. So it's actually a pretty neat setup now and I can set that and program it. Um, in the future, that system does have the ability to hook the wifi if we ever get it out there, so I can do it right from my phone or from a laptop. But that's for future use. But what this is called is spray zone. Like I said, they take out that top layer, they level out the grass. He did not destroy any heads of sprinklers or any marks for the football field, so the guy that did it was really good. Um, it was just a great process and I'm happy with the way it turned out.
I have a question.
Sure.
You know, considering all the rain we had this year, um, how, how is the drainage that is?
Our football field, that's never been a problem since every day. Keeping water on the field's always been a problem.
Okay.
And what, the way we use it to do it is we had a rain, rainwater sprinkler that we would drag across the field. We had piping we would hook up all the way out to the river. We had stuff that was underground, there was a combination of stuff, and we had a pump. Pump that we would drag down to the river every day and have to bring back out again. It's just a ridiculous ordeal. But now it's just, now, I don't, I'm, it's like night and day, so say I'm having it, it's ridiculous.
How easy is it to move that hose that's in the river to a deeper part? You know, it goes through the trees and down into that shallow.
Oh, can rainwater go to the bin? Is it, it should be at the bin unless it moved with the rain that's happening.
It's right straight down from the football field instead of right up the elbow. It's fine right now.
Now it needs to be adjusted.
Is it easy to move?
Yeah, all we have to do is pull it back. It's just the sand, it's a lot, it's about a five foot or six foot sand point, sand steel. So we're gonna take it back and put it back over.
We have a mesh over the end of that to keep sand out and stuff?
It's really fine. It won't, it won't let the sand in there as long as it's working the way it's supposed to. It's designed to do just what it's doing, or put down in a well, same type of sanding point, like if you would put one over your house.
So we still do, we still do pull from the river then?
Yes, we still have a permit with the N R O for from the river, yeah. So, yeah, it's, and I did the figuring on it, I don't even know if it's with me right now, but the water, the water that we're actually putting on the field now. Will be just very, very little bit less than what we normally would have with the larger system. It's just we're doing it differently. And, but I'm sorry.
Uh, what about the softball field?
Uh, that is our future project. We wanted to see how this went first.
Okay.
And we're actually looking at doing the same type of setup for that. We're not looking to put the water in for that, because we're gonna have a different way of doing that.
Yeah.
But what we want to do is level out the field, uh, kind of rescape, re, I don't wanna say rescape, um, relay out the field and. Make it look nice again.
And that'll be taking place this summer after the youth softball programs are done using the field, so that's why the, why waiting until that was utilized. Cause that would have been hundreds to them to have that not available during the.
Yeah, we got a couple more weeks of that, so as soon as that's done, we're on track of trying to do that sometime in August to get that going before winter.
Who's mowing our field?
Right now?
Yeah.
Dan's doing it or I'm doing it.
Okay.
We don't let the kids touch it yet.
Okay.
We're too worried about it.
We mow it in different direction all the time?
Every time. And your pattern eventually overlaps, but it's once every, what is it? There's about four to six different ways we can mow it, so we try not to do anything, anything the same every time.
In culture. So I know you were up on the field and commented, uh, flat as a parking lot, with the crown, of course, that appropriate crown for a football field, but. Noticeable difference in.
Well, it's something we need to get done and it worked out good. Dan's been driving on a lawnmower up there and he goes, man, he goes, it's like driving on the parking lot now. I said, well, that's good. We just, I wanna get the full growth in before football starts so we can get it marked out and ready to go for the season. I know, next week we've got some contact day, so we're gonna mark out the practice field. No. I had it roped off at one point, but then I took that down as we started to cut it. And they said the more we cut it, the more it lays down and it actually grows and fills in any spots that are still lacking.
Do we still use the practice field between the football field and the river?
Yes.
Do we have that trench filled in yet?
Uh, one that was done by the, the cars when they were back there working?
The one?
Cause it's been too wet for me to get anything heavy back there, so I'm not letting anybody go back there.
We are gonna have that trench filled in before we start using it for football.
Yeah, that wouldn't be left like that. Uh, I've actually got materials sitting back there waiting to go back there. But I just don't wanna drop anything back there, cause I'll run it up even worse at this point, lots of the wet right now. Yeah, it's crazy. Um, another thing I wanted to touch on, uh, we had some student artwork that was done over the last year and. You've been getting that up. There's a couple out here, but there's eleven, I believe, throughout the district. And that's something we got up here at the beginning of summer. Uh, if you see on here, there's some rewiring going on, you see the dust collection system? That was, I'm trying to figure a nice way to say this. People that originally did, thought they knew what they were doing. And we had Don and me come out, we had some issues with things holding open and working like they were supposed to. And it's been going on since the beginning, so finally Don sent out their own electrician. And told us it was under warranty because it has been going on since the beginning and this electrician decided they're pulling all the water. So they redid all that under warranty. So hopefully that'll take care of issues that have been passed. You see that, I think it's a new building, why is that going on that slot? Other than that, everything else is just kind of boilerplate.
Do you have any concerns about the roof repairs that had to be done? If there's anything that's.
The roof?
Yeah.
It's just an ongoing thing right now. We know that our roofs are getting, you know, getting up in life. They're all over twenty some years old. And we know that we're gonna have to do work on them eventually, but we've been trying to just take care of little things while we can.
It's not the elementary, we just did the elementary.
No, not the elementary. Well, most of the elementary, I mean, there's still stuff. There's one or two, there's one old roof in the elementary yet over the library area there and we still have. Like last week I was gone, I got a phone call. One of the parapet walls had a little bit of a leak in it. What I do is I call one of, one of our working companies. They come out, they'll take care of that and fix it for us. It's just older stuff that's pulling away. So we gotta pay attention to that. That's why I do the roof inspections in August usually and you get those taken care of.
Thanks for having updates, Dan. Do you have some twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five goals?
I was kind of thinking about that as you were talking about that before. And I said, one of my, one of my goals, work on being fully set. I mean, it's a simple one, but it seems to be hard. Um, maybe a little better cohesiveness as a group. And that'll, that'll go off to having more meetings and talking a little more and hopefully work things out if people have issue with each other. Now, I always tell those guys to talk to each other when things are going on, make sure it's not something that festers. I don't like that. So, that's one of my goals. And helping save more money, see what we can do to figure out some more savings, if we have to, in case things don't go away, we want to.
And that, the facilities and capital improvement committee will kind of play into that too, that has been into those discussions, cause I see some of the, his notes about like this. That was something that the committee established was the entrances, like upgrading those, move to the top of the list, get done. Some of those doors have had been repaired already or?
Yeah, one I just had done, one was on, oh, I was gone, the guy showed up and took care of the one door that was sticky. We got it, he just put on that and cleaned up and. He just sent me an email about an hour ago to ask me if I liked what he did and I haven't even overlooked it yet. So, we're trying to knock things off as best we can and not try and spend too much money. So, any other questions? All right, thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Excellent. Thanks, Seymour.
So to summarize what we did in twenty-three, twenty-four, one of the big projects was replacing all of our network switches in wireless access points. Um, the hard part was we couldn't do it during the summer, so they ran backward and didn't arrive till November. Um, over winter break, they scheduled to come in and replace the switches, but we had to do that first. Um, one of the two technicians that was supposed to be here ended up having their son come home from college with the flu, not knowing it infected him. So I ended up using my time that I was gonna do access points to help the switch guy get those done so we could get them in, that was the core. Um, so I helped them knock that out and they credited the district the time that I worked, bringing that credited back in lieu of the payment that was supposed to be done. Um, this whole project happened through federal B rate funding. We have a set budget that we had to work within. I sent out some requests for proposals. They all came back well over the budget. I worked with the one closest and they actually got within the budget. So we got seventy percent off. That's the reimbursement from the federal. So we paid thirty percent of that project. While we were working together, I got to share the screen and see what this price was. Uh, if we were not in education, this would be north of three hundred thousand. Uh, as education, we were down to a hundred and eleven and then we only paid thirty percent of that. So, that's, that's great for what we did. They'll all work together, they'll be cohesive. Instead of having a single point of failure for the wireless where all the access points go to a physical controller, they're handling through a virtual controller. So there's no one point of failure in our wireless system anymore. If any wireless access point goes down and it happens to be the virtual controller. Any other access point on the network can take over as the controller and it just keeps going seamlessly. I bought one extra of each type of access point so that if one goes down, I can quickly replace that one and then wait for the. Product to go home and come back under warranty.
What are we on? Are we on Cisco, Ubiquiti? Like what system do you?
We are Aruba HP. Um, Cisco has annual fees. This Aruba system does not. It's a one and done. And Aruba is what I've used in the past as well. In fact, the system we're installing here, I had installed my previous system three years, four years prior. And it was earlier models. Still very happy with it. It works great. Uh, no, no issues there. Aruba HP is huge. Um, since Aruba Body HBO, so it's, it's a great system. All my switches are Aruba HP and then we have the wireless system yet. Um, and they're still working together. But as we replace them, the system will go in and be all Aruba HP. But that was the big project for twenty-three and twenty-four. Uh, you can see the other small things there. Cyber security was a big issue that's been coming forefront. Um, so we're gonna continue doing what we have to do. We're actually getting ahead of the game. Our cyber insurance is not requiring any of this at this point. Most of the other CISO tech coordinators that I talk with, their insurance is requiring it. Um, so we're kind of being proactive to get all these pieces in place, so as far as those who are already ahead of the game, they don't have to hurry up and catch up. And it's what you have to do in today's cyber world. It's just, it's the nature of these, where you have to do endpoint detection, you have to do multi-factor or second two-fold authentication.
And we've been, Michael attended the CISA cyber response plan, coming up with a district cyber response plan, Pam and Michael and I.
We have a draft in place, and we're working on finalizing a cyber incident plan. It's not just an attack. It's, all right, fiber got cut somewhere outside the district, how do we respond? Things like that. So if anything to do with internet connectivity, having an issue somewhere ranging from just cut fiber, power outage, flood in an area affecting equipment outside of our realm, or all the way to an attacker getting inside our network, how do we handle that? So we'll set processes and, um, game plans and playbooks in place of, if this happens, here's what we're gonna do. So those are the big initiatives from.
The option that you went with for other thing of using the key, was that a one-time cost, or is there an annual cost associated?
And we also have the U D key, because that's the most secure form on the market right now. Um, you know, since we're strictly Google, when we go to a form of multi-factor authentication, um, I have requested or asked, I'll say, either personal smartphone is backup. Figured if they don't have their district key with them, they're probably gonna have their smartphone with them, so they're not locked out of the district Google account. And I have got no pushback on that whatsoever. Uh, this is the second most secure form, where it sends you a prompt to your phone saying, is it you? Yes or no? And that's the simplest way to do it, but it's the second most secure. A security key is the most secure form at this point.
And as one of the guinea pigs, it's not very intrusive at all. I've been one of the first people the admin team established.
It's probably just wondering if it was a one-time, or there's a, a monthly cost associated with it.
That's the other, the sending factor, that, I mean, that's why I went for Aruba H P over system as well. They're both profitable and quality in service, but I don't have that annual contract anymore.
Yeah.
I could get it if I got the central thing where I have one pane of glass to manage everything, but as I looked into it, I'm like, I couldn't see the benefit of that annual cost, I'm like, we're fine without it. So, it was just helpful that way. Um, and the other thing is, with the security keys we have, some people are like, oh, what if I have an iPhone, I don't have a E S P port to plug in? They have N F C in them. So if you have an iPhone, you just kind of hold the key by a certain part of your phone, it'll tell you, plug it to the top, bottom, left, the right base of your model phone. Hold it here, and then just magically does this little thing, you're good to go forward. Um, you guys will be needing the keys as well. On Chromebooks, you may have to authenticate each time, because they're an endpoint device, they have a Windows workstation device, so we'll play that out. But it's basically just plug it in, you're fine. Plug it in, touch it, we move on.
I would like to briefly, just a, a couple of Michael's notes related to my weekly communication that I copied the board on about our, some of our technology goals next year, as you saw, Michael mentioned our Chromebook damage. Um, another one of his projects is, and it's related to that.
Page two.
Yeah, is that, that's connected to our technology goals, is getting those Chromebooks start charging stations, and then hopefully reducing some of the damage uh, that we're seeing to Chromebooks, because they're not gonna be transported home on a nightly basis with our younger students and stuff, so that. Kind of the, the big picture looking down the road to reduce costs and do what's best for our kids at the same time.
Yeah, L C P panels broken loss chargers are still the biggest issues that we run into. And the hard part now is everything's on U S B C, including Apple. Apple going forward, and everything is on U S B C. And personally, I question that choice, because you have twenty-four pins plugging in, and if you cross the pins, you short step out on the boards. Uh, they're a little, they're not as robust as the barrel charger, but that's what the market decided to do, and we don't have a choice. You can either do it or not buy the license. There's no other choice anymore. So, but that's what we're doing. You can see on the second side there for page two, is we're ordering six of these charging cards from six through twelve eighth grade classrooms, to keep them in school. Hopefully reduce that. Parents were liking some of that through the feedback we got as well, because then it's less of the, why do you have it in your room? Fighting with the students, leave it alone, and not use it for entertainment purposes, and all that kind of stuff, and reduce breakage.
I received about a dozen communications and support this weekend from families related to that plan.
Um, the top of the list there is replacing the district's two servers and storage device. That'll be happening at the end of this month after the audit is completed. Um, the ones we have reached end of life, so to speak, last, end of last school year, they can't be pushed further, because even though the servers in San Juan bought in twenty nineteen, the processors were twenty seventeen, so they're no longer supported. So we were stuck with the software we were using. However, that software was still good. It still will be good through the time we replace it. So we're not, oh, no support, we're not out in no man's land. We're still supported, we're still secure, um, but we have to do it now. We have no choice in that. We need to step up. And so I threw some different ideas out, what about going hosting versus keeping this stuff in-house? Just hosting our cyber security finance accounts for over three-fourths of the cost of actually just doing this. So by not outsourcing that, we're already covering three-quarters of the cost of these servers over five years. So it made sense to still keep it in-house. Most people I've talked to that work on our systems recommend we keep these systems in-house. It's more secure for us due to our size. If we're a much larger point, Marshfield, Rapids, it makes sense in hopes, because maintaining a system that big and robust in-house is just not cost-effective. It's still cost-effective for us to maintain it in-house. And the thing I like, too, is if we do have somebody break in and start doing stuff, like blink and unplug your internet, and now they're no longer in our system's doing it. So it's a little added bonus security feature we have. Um, but we'll be replacing those. Those three devices host fifteen to seventeen servers. It's a virtual environment, so instead of having to buy seventeen servers, I'd buy two servers and a storage device, and use virtual technology to actually run seventeen individual servers over it. Our H V A, um, our student information system, our door entry system, our backup system, all the stuff runs in virtual environments, so.
Are you able to make that change, or will you contract with someone to switch over those servers?
I believe working with them, and it is contracted, it was part of the cost.
And have we already put that in our budget for next year? That's our budget?
Yep.
This was, like, we kind of knew this was coming down the road.
Yeah, we knew it was coming, and working with the vendor I did, they did a terrific job of working with, we could get it within a good budget number. Uh, they came in well less than their competitors did, and then once they came in there, they could get discounts being our current provider as well.
Why are we using?
Skyward dot Madison. Skyward back support services. They're the same ones that support our services now. Um, to be fair, I sent R F Ps out to different vendors I've worked with in the past, so again, a variety of them, off the bat, they came in most cost-effective. And that is work up with the sharpen the fence a little bit more. So it works really well. Um, we'll be getting new Chromebooks for our freshman class. Going forward, I'll promo till I make it here around, because our operating system is just becoming so bulky, that the four games is kind of slow and cold. You guys may know this a little bit, depending on how active you get with your Chromebook. Students are quite a bit more action, I think, because they have multiple tabs open, doing multiple projects, video, audio, things like that, shoot it up. Um, and then next summer, all the Windows devices are gonna have to get collected and updated to Windows eleven, or whatever's coming after Windows eleven. Windows twelve is supposed to be out already. Microsoft said, oops, I guess we're not ready yet, hasn't released it yet. And we may have to add never even some of our devices or replace them, depending on whether the components are supported.
Do you have a student this summer?
No.
He's been beating the bushes.
Yeah, that student lasted the school year this summer, and it's looking like not next summer, or next year or summer either. Um, which I understand, being smaller class sizes, there's only so many people interested in technology. Um, and so, I mean, I doubt the same thing in a previous district, being even smaller than this, of years where in this, I don't know, we'll do the best we can.
Yeah.
Questions, gentlemen?
Thank you very much. Has the dad tapped the backer? Is that the?
She had a child carry shoe pop up, so if you could have that, and I guess go first, Pam and I will throw any questions related to Pam's report.
All right, for food service, uh, first was splash based on our summer school, uh, program. We just finished, um, back for number one, June twenty-seventh, we had sixteen days of service. We did a toll of two thousand two hundred eighty-seven breakfasts and three thousand two hundred two lunches. They weren't left in campus, so that means anybody eating out there kind of came in. We did get a decent amount of kids that came off the street that worked in our summer school program, especially one that came and picked up big brother, big sister, cousin, or what have you. Uh, we were on pace the first two weeks to actually break. Uh, I mean, our tolls will might should do better, but it fell down last week, because our summer school time was just, um, it dipped, especially that last week, it just had, it just didn't happen a couple of years ago. Just, uh, even free food, it just did not want to come into my pool. Uh, this was the fourth year of the five-year qualification board. Um, we qualified through the census part. Um, they re-did the census, so going forward, if nothing changes, next year will be the last year, we could offer it for free and no charge. Um, there's two ways we can make it no charge. It's the census, which they re-did our area, has to be land value, how many people in the area, how many are under age eighteen, all that stuff, which drugs over top, so if you gotta go in. Or the other way is you get fifty percent or more free to do lunch, and those numbers come in maybe in October every year. So we're talking not this October, next October, we need to get to fifty percent or more. We're close. We're always hovering around that forty-eight percent, which in a school our size, we're talking maybe eight, ten more kids to qualify will bring us to fifty percent mark. So, there is a good chance we will hit that mark. I'm not saying it won't, but. Let's see how that goes. Uh, we had our D P I art for summer school that happens, supposed to happen every two to three years. With COVID a few years ago, it kind of got moved around, how many years they come, or like that, so we gotta all catch on back up. Did wonderful. I have no technical systems issues, no extra things to turn in, or no, um, how they like to call it, no like, D P I jail stuff, you know? So yeah, we did, they were really happy with our program. Actually, our auditor came in, who was extremely happy about how much fresh fruits and vegetables they offered them. She said we're one of the few schools in this entire state, she covers all of them, that we always have a wide variety of fresh fruit specials. Very little we have canned fruit out. Only time we had that, we always use our apple sauce out, because there are a few kids that, they only want apple sauce every day of their life, which is, that's what they want, you know, okay, that's fine. But we have, you know, fresh watermelon, kiwi, strawberry, grapes. Anyone didn't see this, we're like, we do our fresh fruit pineapple, all that kind of stuff. So she's had to do that. In fact, we did so well, we got to move to the stage where we're putting a chuff in a mixer and in. It's called Turn Up The Beat Award. I don't play on words, turn up the beat, maybe get that. For our summer school, there's, I think it was like the one mix, it was gold, bronze, and silver. Beat awards. Well, we moved to the stage now where we're turning stuff in, so we actually qualify, hopefully you get one of those, which would be amazing if you do get it, because school to our size almost never gets those awards. They always get the school. So, open, remember, so turn stuff in, it'd be nice to see, I'm at least on the right track with that. Um, now, let's go back to our school year here, we just finished. For our total meal counts, our elementary building, we're not counting childcare, so we're just talking four K through eighth grade. We did a total of thirty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-one breakfasts. For lunches, we did forty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-nine meals, which is right on par with what we do in our period, which is good. Uh, high school, straight around twelve, we did eight thousand three hundred ninety-two breakfast counts. That's one area for a role of improvement I can work on. Um, and that's something I think it's a lot about timing today, because first year, let's say we had breakfast a little later, or right before nine seventeen or something like that. It's the more kids want to eat then, that is seven thirty in the morning, they're just kind of rushing to school. Still half asleep, they're like, just have like their energy, drink their coffee, just get to class, and then how are you thinking about eating? So that's something I like to work on, maybe figure out, you know, we speak to offering both type things, just to kind of help improve on that. Lunches, we did sixteen thousand three hundred three meals. I mean, right there along the shows that we're doubling. So the kids are here, you know, they're eating, it's, I think it's a time of day, which is starting now for breakfast. Um, so for childcare now, we did two thousand seventy-three breakfast meals, two thousand three hundred thirty-two lunches. Which is pretty solid, considering that a lot of the four K students are in four K, except childcare are in the middle of it, so. That's working out pretty well. Um, so if we're averaging it all for our entire school district, we're doing two hundred forty-six breakfasts a day, and three hundred forty-seven lunches a day. Which is pretty fair. I mean, you always want to get higher counts, I mean, you're wrong, you always want to improve on, do more and more students, but for a school our size, it's, we're right out here, we're not the one, you know, reaching the students eating.
Did we have a goal? Like, did, did we have a goal of how many we would have?
Yeah, what I wanted to hit this year was three hundred and twenty-five lunches and two hundred breakfast meals average, so we're on, we're, we're seeing. Yeah, so, now, next year I want to shoot for three hundred fifty lunches, I want to shoot for three hundred breakfasts average. So I'm trying to increment and keep getting that up there. Uh, with that, what we're working on, what we're working on too, we have our after-school program. My class two is kind of like the first year. They signed in all, which declined, I'm helping out a couple of days a week with that. So I'm gonna involve some students with that, so we're gonna start making some of our, we're getting more local poor and stuff like that in, and then have some of those students that work in the afternoon, help prepare it, clean it. And that way they can also learn about the ingredients, have a little stand how we make it, and they can even tell their friends, hey, I helped make that. I helped prepare that. I helped, even if it's just, I helped wash those tomatoes, you know? It might get more interesting coming down from the line, too. So that's a good way to catch them after. Um, I'm looking for, it was, gosh, it was three years ago now, I had Cody, who was a high school student that was really interested in food service. At the first high school, so I kind of had him work for me a couple of days a week. Um, we did one daily, where we did all like, uh, like our school food service, where it's like a mass service type thing. And I had one day where I worked him, I did more of the finding out, I mean, restaurant, that's my background isn't that. So if there's any students that I'm so kind, work with, talk to the council, I almost had one last year. So if anybody knows students that's interested, work with them. I know all the chef instructors, all the colleges. Like, we take them down to one on graduate or Madison. I know restaurant chefs that are still working in places, we can go, we can film, do different things, so it's always an opportunity there, students. Um, equipment needs, our dishwasher at our high school is a nice way of putting it, it's past its prime. That's definitely the big piece of equipment that has to be changed up, and there's more, two, two dishwasher, Dan can take it. This, we gotta put a vent in the wall, and changing water, and it's leaking, it's just, it's, it needs, it's, it needs water, it doesn't, yeah. And then the other one going forward is the ovens. They're still working, I mean, wrong, but they are past their lifespan. They're constantly breaking down equipment. I'd like to, within the next, if not this school year, or following school years, at least replace the one the high school will start with. I'd like to replace that one with, we have a smaller version of comedy oven at the elementary oven, we got, can we, yeah, can we just go now? Because I could use an oven, steamer, poach things with it, I mean, I can make soups and that thing, you name it, I can do it. I mean, I can hook up my phone, I can turn on, off, hold, Wi-Fi, and most things, I mean, it's beautiful, playing, it makes big, so I want to get one of those in the high school that would replace our oven, disaster oven. One of these days, they're gonna come in, it's gonna be surprise. So that's our next thing. And then, uh, August first, we have our yearly training. This year it's held in Osce Fairchild, for all our food service kids to gather together for the day. We can do all our, not all, the majority of our community education units credits, like our justice for all stuff, we need to keep the D P I, they have a lot of notes coming forward. They tried a lot of notes coming forward, sometimes they don't even know, but it goes through. Uh, as far as the change for the next school year, it's pretty minor this summer school, when we're been starting, as far as like oil and sodium rays and stuff. So you really won't see many changes, like, I'll see the changes in my ends and how we do things, but the average person, the student's not gonna see the changes on the line. But the following school year is when it kind of kick in with the up to eighth grade, no chocolate milk, that type of thing, that's when they're gonna start seeing the changes. Unless something changes, you know, we don't know, from eyes on the next year, you never know, but, so this upcoming school year, the average person won't see too much of a change, it'll go a little bit, but it's just a little feeble mind, things will change. Uh, so new items are coming out, new items for breakfast to help combat that. We always had juice every day, we're eliminating that every other day, and the other days we're doing, we start to start summer school, and it's really seem to enjoy them. I made homemade box, so this is, this one is, all different flavors we found on, orange tree, baked apple, strawberry banana, wine delight, you name it, because they got all kinds of recipes, so. So we rotate those out, so we're still getting fruit, juice-type drink, but it's healthier. That make sense?
Yeah.
Um, so, and then for lunch prices, breakfasts stay the same, we have to increase our lunch prices five cents for students, and then adults staff going ten more cents. That'll cover the difference of our whole program. Um, we should be getting audited for our school food service and breakfast program this year, but either, oh, they haven't put the list out yet. So we might be in a year, but they are still a little behind. Uh, I don't know, probably not the most, not even the top, by October, you just know. Milk bins are out, they come back in at the end of the month, they're due. So I'll show my August board, me who wins the open. Um, we sent them off. It's kind of nice, the last couple of years, this really hasn't been any milk company bidding anymore. But all this last year, and more coming into the game, like Weber in, uh, Marshfield, they've sent them out. Um, only issue that I've seen them done so far is they only want to do one do every week, but I have talked to them, so we do do two, because it's just space flies and days. But I think more schools are putting in them, so if they get enough schools, I think they will expand. Also, Goldberg area, which is essential, it's kind of, before they were just kind of like the middleman taking milk and delivery. But they kind of had enough of that, so they're doing their own thing too. So one's out to done. Um, so we'll find out, maybe on that. And then local ingredients, I know a bunch based on that, we have been working on local ingredients and stuff. There is another program, we just started up with, um, has to do with our favorites, which is fresh fruits and vegetables. has to do with our favorites, which is fresh fruits and vegetable program. We go to Plovers, the distributor, A J Prods. They have a program. They've been kind of workshop names on this, but marketplace is what they've been calling, so I'm going to assume that's what they're going to go with. Uh, we've been getting a lot of local ingredients, when I say local, it's trying to get as close to central Wisconsin as possible. So we're talking popular place about forty mile radius, almost. Yeah, um, we're going to apply this. And then this goes all through the year, depending on what, you know, this dead or winter. And, you know, there's not as much stuff open for beginning of school year, then, but they got more different lettuce programs in there, we got potatoes, which I already have pre-booked from farm, it's all kind of by hand company here. So we've got little baby red potatoes coming this fall, we're doing a meal with. Um, we got tomatoes, freshers, let's keep rolling, so. It's, uh, we also going to get our cheese sticks directly from Masonville next, next, next year. We kind of had a partial end up, they stuff already ordered before they got into the game with us. So that's all done, so they'll be our primary cheese stick source going for next year. Um, so yeah. And is there any other companies that anybody hears of? That once I get into schools with local part, please let me know. Or be their information, I'm glad to reach out. Because a lot of times something local, it's just kind of word of mouth, you know? No one really knows how to get into it, or how to through contact, or I mean, I don't even know that someone has something they want to sell the school, so if anybody knows of anybody, please let me know. I'm glad to reach out to them.
Um, question, have you touched base at all with the, the Wood County Health Department?
Oh, yeah.
Um, yeah, because sometimes they know where the local foods.
Yeah, actually, we're on the list because, um
Right.
We are actually the first school in the state to do it, to be honest with you. The way that we actually, because I kind of started the planning. It's, they call it a marketplace, I'll give it another two, it's kind of weird, everybody's calling it marketplace. Um, there's a chief they sell, every month, every month they have a meeting at a different school, I always go to one. Uh, we hosted the first one, I remember last
Yeah.
Last, when was it? Was it in October? And I can't remember when it was, so. We get together at different schools, different local providers. Share recipes, share ideas, what works, what's not working. Um, and it's starting to build up, because we're getting more of the farmers and local players that are kind of catching on now, so they're starting to listen. So like I said, it's early stages, you'll see more as it grows. Um, I would like to get, the true thing, I kind of was telling everyone with students last year, is just kind of get this to a place, which is high school. Another older kid, we have a greenhouse already, we have to sit him forward. We could just get him to get a little space, and have students work on this. If we start small, start with like herbs, or make homemade apple sauce, you know?
That brings it to my point, I see this in the Lucy's garden.
Mm-hmm.
They want to have a greenhouse.
Yeah.
I mean, has there been any coordination with, uh?
No, I mean, because it's so new, it's, I, I know, yeah.
It's kind of, but it's just something that I, you know.
Yeah, because we were talking about, I was thinking of myself, just just seeing when she goes to game for lunch.
Obviously.
Some of her favorite things were soup, pasta.
Sure.
Um, so we can grow that kind of stuff, we grew tomato, get pasta sauce with it. Grow different vegetables, make certain kinds of soups with them.
Some.
You know, there's little things like that, you know? Oh, yeah, definitely, I would love to do something like that.
The community donates a ton of vegetable garden stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Does any of that come to you, or is that all going?
It usually goes to the food service class, because it's not, you know, a it comes so sparingly, and it comes last minute type thing.
Yeah.
Um. I would love to take it, the only issue with that is if we get too, like a large amount, which we need for, you know, for certain five people. We would just need more labor to wash, to prep the stuff, because I don't have the staff to do that right now, um. Otherwise, I'd be a little, I would get more of that, it's just, they don't have a consistent basis for a large amount of students. A lot of times we'll get stuff in like, we got a bunch of potatoes in, but it was enough for like thirty eagle.
Sure, yeah.
Not five hundred. So, but thirty kids, I might get a pick to get it, you know?
If you go to the south, there's a greenhouse now, too, there is a garden down there now.
Yeah.
Yes.
That, one of the eagle scouts did, and I think Alyssa's growing stuff in there.
Yeah, like I said, a lot of them are students, if we can get a student group, organizations, or if I want to say it, that plans your stuff and grow it, I'd more than have to take it in, process it. Even maybe have the students vote on what they want to be made out, you know? They want to see me make this soup, they want me to make this pasta sauce. They want me to make me a homemade pizza sauce, I'll make homemade pizzas. Whatever it ends up being, you know, tell our students vote on what we want to do with it.
And you know the other comment that I'd make about the strength of using local people? Is a couple of the examples you just gave, Masonville Dairy, Weber Farm, like those are the exact people that you also go to when you are looking for a community garden, and you ask them for a donation to be able, like so when you go local, then you have that opportunity to go and actually and ask them to invest back in the school versus buying it from
Some company that's all the work on or something, you know?
Correct, someplace, but it's just not, it doesn't
Yeah. Yeah.
They're, they don't have an investment, so, because those organ, those two companies
Yeah.
give a ton back into the community.
It's nice to say, because that's, that's from a lot of the hangup coming up, you know, this local stuff is it's the bulk of volume, because student schools are, aren't volume, it's like I said, we're and we're a small addition, and we're serving five hundred kids plus a day. So you got to have that volume, and a lot of times they only have enough for a good process for two hundred students.
Sure.
So it's, that's the, a big hangup part of it too.
So do you have additional meals, like for specialties? Like outside of your breakfast and lunch times? You talk about some of these special soups, or some of these different things that come in, like local donations and stuff, are there additional meals that you provide? Or you're?
I don't worry to lunch, but you know, honestly.
So you go with the, so then you're also restricted to those nutritional, you know?
Yeah, um, I'm having pretty good work, I don't know, I was still playing. No, I mean, not, not working, obviously, you're going against the rules, but working it to fit it in. Because you break it all over weeks' work, so like if one day is heavy, or you're thinking another day to lower them. So it equals out, that's all.
So there's no additional, you, you meals that are
No.
Outside of the standard breakfast and lunch.
Yeah, because that's right.
And you're utilizing those products in your program.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Well, breakfast, lunch, and then also the after-school program.
Yeah, it's a program on the ground. And, and there was talks, you know, when the, when the new grocery store came into town here, kind of a big idea of coordinating with them.
I, I've, I've
I said anything.
I go there a lot, actually, I can contact a lot, I'll get a lot of little things from here and there, um. They're still kind of searching for their business part of it, I would say. Um, I did talk, because they are kind of more expensive, yelling on more, I'm convinced they're kind of listening to more stuff in there. So let me add some aspect, in fact, I got to go, I talked to one of the owners, I'm going to go down, I'm going down there. Send my calendar, it's the second week of August, we get closer to school. Um, we're going to start ordering some more stuff from them directly, um.
I know the last time we talked to you, you said there was a hangup there, basically, with
Because they were still kind of in their, you know, their
And I'm just, there's no progression whatsoever.
Yeah, I mean, we got to some, I mean, I get some items, but like I'll get some of our juices that we use for like our smoothies, I've gone there for everything like that.
Talk, talk was about like, that fruits and vegetables.
Yeah, um, they're still kind of working, because they're their produce really isn't selling a lot there, so they're, they're actually kind of scaling back almost a little bit. Um, I think it's, it's more on when merry days are going for sale for sales.
Understand.
Yeah, when, when their sales are, I mean, because they don't even know by noon on a Wednesday, I can have it to my Monday afternoon, and the following week. It's just, it's kind of they got to build their sale or not, to order from us? Type thing, or help them all back forth, if that makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But yeah, I mean, I guess I, I stop in there at least once a week throughout the school year, get things, talk to them, see what they have coming in. Um, just kind of bounce ideas back and forth. Any new coming, they let me know, I'll work on it, um. Especially if we're getting things like, uh, especially times of year like our pie day, I make the usual pies, I'll get certain things for them to make, um.
Do they reach out to you, or you always reach?
I usually tell them it's easier, because they're busy, I just stop there, it's they have my information, I have the code, or it's just I don't know, I think I actually can do it, to be honest with you.
Okay.
So.
Okay, um, is there any other questions, or can we move on? Okay.
Alright.
Let's, thank you very much, may I keep feeding our kids?
Oh, yeah.
Do good job. Um, how would you like to handle, uh, Tabitha's department?
You know, Pam and I can give an overview, because a lot of the, what you're going to see well, the staffing piece is what I'm talking about, like the overriding thing, we can answer questions. But the one where we've been working with Tabitha is the staffing piece. Um, she mentions a key point, one of the things we were looking at is how do we entice more applicants for positions, and um, we were pretty excited about the offer of the discount for childcare um, services for those that are employed, if you're employed in P C C C, you get a fifty percent discount on childcare costs for your own children if they're old in there, like looking at those types of components. We raised the hourly rate for any certified, um, teachers.
The D P I current licensed teacher.
Yeah, currently licensed D P I teacher. Because we had some applicants for some teaching positions, we didn't hire for the teaching positions, we were like, hey, we'd love to give them a reason, they want to come in and work in the childcare center, so the, the staffing piece, we can see in her synopsis, she talked about even with the, looking at reallocating and, uh, to reduce the waitlist. The hangup right now is, is that we need people to staff the rooms, is what it comes down to ultimately, so. Um, uh, but I'll field any questions that I can answer, any that I can't, um, we'll follow up.
So I have a handful of questions, I can ask them, but I'm also totally okay with this just going on next month's agenda and Tabitha coming.
Yeah, that'd be fair.
Um, so either or, I mean, a couple of questions are, wouldn't it, we made the change of the door, have we changed anything, like we were going to eliminate waitlists when we did that, and have we eliminated waitlists? My second question is, it looks like there's kids on the waiting list that could fit into the max number of kids that actually fit, like so toddler, we have five. But the max is six with one teacher, so my question would be why wouldn't we at least take one of the kids off the waiting list to get to the max? To match up with the teacher, I mean, again, just, again, totally
Those are ones I'm not going to be able to handle.
Correct, and then my next question is, have we so, I'm, I shared a while, quite a while ago, that I talked to the local childcare person. I'm forgetting her name.
Kelly?
Yes, thank you. And, um, she checked into it, and you can, they have to go through the training. But you can use volunteers as your staff. The other question is, like could we brainstorm or think about how to maybe open it up to community members to actually volunteer in the childcare center, again, we would have to invest in training them, they have to be trained, but they there's a lot of older retired individuals that maybe would be willing to do this. If we put together kind of what that looks like, and just another brainstorming idea of like what other option, that's just one idea, but like, what are the twenty twenty-five, for twenty twenty-five strategies of like new things to think about with staffing crises and what that looks like, so I just had a number of questions.
Yeah, why, why don't we, like, some of these things, obviously, if, if they ever do shine, I don't know, get into those specific details. Why don't we just bump this to August?
Well, now you just have all my questions.
Yeah. Well, what I would ask is, and actually right in my mind, is like, if you could put those in an email.
Well, she now has them, right? Do you have them?
Did she come next meeting?
No.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, but I would like to be able to.
I didn't know you took minutes, and you have my questions.
She won't give the specific questions.
Okay, for me.
I'm hoping if we could just put them in an email, like, and then we'll get detailed answers.
I have a question you can answer, we talked about the meals at the childcare center, because does each family at the childcare center have their own account or?
Basically, just like a school lunch program, I know this, like nine hour in the summer, and then I'd probably say, basically, since the holidays, it seems like our meal counts have gone down a bit, because they have more infants than they do the older kids, so they have to, you know, formula, that type of thing. So I can see within this next year, year and a half, you're going to see more than toddler age groups, just because we have so many infants right now. Which I can just tell by my meal counts, I'm going to know what we're serving, three year old, or even two years, you know, et cetera, so. That could be something, I'm not saying bad or good, but what, doing more meals, which also for the workers in childcare, is a little more into serving the meals forum compared to a toddler that's you know, maybe taking a nap, you know, compared to a three-year-old, slinging, you know, having cheese all over and serving, you know?
And the childcare can only count in the national school branch counts at these schools, et cetera, regular school. So like during summer school, it was three, four days a week, and then on that Friday, childcare had to pay food service for the food.
Because you didn't eat in summer school on Fridays.
So there's always some money built into childcare to pay for that, or insert a state, you know, now, like, the rest of the summer, any meals the childcare eats, the childcare pays food service.
Do they count like a scheme? Do they, do they have to offer free or loose lunch?
Yes, yes, yeah.
And they have the same idea, like they have to have a certain sized portion of fruit, certain size meat, a little brain, et cetera, you know? There's usually a little lore, for example, like a high school student is three fourths cupped fruit. Middle school, now they're treated to half a cup. Childcare under the age of two is a quarter cup. So, I mean, it's the same idea, it's just, that's why it's possible, because it's just different models.
Sure.
I have a question for you. Staffing is a problem at the daycare.
Yeah.
With Tabitha, another one going on the turn and leave system, we have a
Yes.
An answer for that? Well, one of the answers is, we're hoping we're going to get some hires, but Pam and I talked about this last week, I believe, is that we have two district subs that we contract. And this is called triages, and that situation that we go, our triage is, for that month is our two district subs will go in, and that'll be their sub job, because we run the childcare center, right, so yes, yeah, I answered your question. We were, we were all worried about that, but that's our fallback plan, if we don't get any applicants.
You solve the threat.
Yeah. We join with your friend.
Very good, well, we'll dive into this more, uh, next month.
Yeah.
I'm moving on to item E. Uh, Chief Dorp, we're, would love to hear from you, related to the school resource officer. Related to that.
Absolutely. The incident request for the high school where elementary schools, and these are in first ones, I've seen a lot of changes, a lot of other talks with students, you know, unofficial. So, some of the requests were bullying, harassment, sexting, inappropriate pictures, vaping, truancy, weapon, knife. Kids forget they have a knife in their pocket or in their backpack, there wasn't, uh a threat.
Like a jackknife?
Yeah, like a jackknife.
Okay.
They were at work or something, and had it in their pocket, kids, so, so there was no no one was in danger. Um, disorderly conduct, other kids with this story, kind of, they were warned before, they had plenty of opportunity to change their behavior, so it wasn't like a one mess up and they got hammered. Disorderly conduct with motor vehicle. Um, child abuse, some school rules, stuff with some kids were defying with their cell phones, so. Normally, I don't get involved in that, but I would assist the principals in that. Uh, we had a criminal referral for a battery. Uh, we had a juvenile referral to capturing and committing representation of another without consent. Say patients issued were two for disorderly conduct, and two for underage possession of active teen, vaping. And we had some speak up, speak out app referrals. Two of those. Uh, not going to go into great detail on it, some contentious stuff there, but that app is great. You know, students can obviously report to it. And I saw other staff get notified by text, email, and we respond with that. Um, presentations I did for staffing students, uh, staff I do the S R O intro, do overhaul, we respond to an active threat. Um, students, seventh grade, you do the speak up, speak out. Drivers education class, I did a seventh grade online bullying. Had two student interns this fall, and I did seven total job shadows. Just recently, and doing, I went to the S R O conference, and got some good information on there. Which will, one of them will definitely be put in a place is, um you know, we have our active threat response. The kind of end of that part is the reunification part. So we'll put that part in, and it'll Um, the kind of notes for the year was, uh again, a positive working relationship. And we're always working together, thinking on how to improve. Obviously, there's, school had a big challenge with the loss of Lucy, um. It was just amazing, like, the response you got from staff, like, and had a matter if you guys were able to read it, like, within ten minutes, we had staff here, there was stuff set up. You know, just the overall score was great for the kids. And I think that set the tone for them healing quicker. And also the kids, that's very impressive family, they, they took care of each other, you know? Shows all tight industry community, guys, like, the kids ought to do that. You know, so obviously, they wear that, they have the support of parents, and it's there's all that stuff still in place. And then you know, the way the community and everyone responded was great. Yeah, other people, I don't, I'm sure it makes Yeah, other people, I don't, I'm sure maybe other people have heard, it's people coming up, like, can't believe the sport. It's so common, it's like the white film all, that's what we expect from each other. It's why we're here, that's why we take pride in our school and community. So, you know, it's a tragic event, but I think it also highlighted how great our community is.
Um, have, do you provide any type of report to the city council?
Um, for my SRO stuff? Yeah, I'll put in there every month, like, during, during the school year. I come in there like, what's going on at school, like, what I've been doing? And just like update.
Okay, thank you. I just have one question, so you have, and I don't, I don't expect you to know the number, just kind of wondering if you know the trending. So you've had 17 high school incidents and nine elementary? And then, you know, like, one battery and four citations, like, is that up from past years? Is that about consistent the same? Is that down?
It's about the same. Last year was 16 and five, 16 high school, five, um.
Okay.
There was actually more, last year we had more, uh, juvenile referrals.
Okay.
Um, last year we had more citations, so we had nine.
Got it, I mean.
Yeah, the truancy ones, now we're trying to work more like, cause the truancy ones, it's not really solving the problem.
It's true, yeah.
A lot of the families that do issue the citation to it. Wow.
And I super appreciate this, it's awesome. It would be, it would be cool if in the future we could also maybe get some.
Like a five-year trip?
Yeah, like our five-year trend and like a little graph of like, you know, are, are we staying consistent? Is there a spike?
Yep.
Is there a reason for a spike? Are we, but, um, thank you so much for what you do for our kids and for our school.
Every incident that I, I read, I do a little SRO, SRO report, I have all that file, I can draft that out.
That'd be awesome. It just helps kind of know, like, how are we doing, right? Like, where is it kind of at in regards to, um, are, are data trending? And then I don't know if any of this information is actually kept statewide, like, how are we in comparison to other smaller schools? Like, um.
Just talking like when you go to the SRO conference, you talk about similar school districts, like.
It's good.
We have way less.
Yeah.
Well, and on that data track too, and I don't need to tell you guys this, here's the other piece too, with small, in small numbers, we have to be careful. But these are incidences, which means the other way we dig into data could be, even though it's nine incidences, it could be two students that were all not, like, it's looking not only at the number of incidents, it's looking at that. But yeah, I, I like that idea that we throw together like a five-year trend.
Just, just to give us some benchmarking of.
Cause you have the data.
How good the data really is, right? Like, you don't really have any comparisons to know if it's good data or it's just, yeah, but thank you so much.
Yeah, I wanted to say one thing about Chief, I say this every year, but an SRO position is only as effective as the person who's in the role being affected, and I can't think of a better, and it's not just because of his large size. They're like, but he, he's shy about this, but sometimes just simply mentioning his name is enough to get kids to, like, hey, do we need to get Chief Doris out here? And the beautiful thing about Chief Doris, it's not fear, it's respect, the kids respect him, um, and they know him. And, and it's about the proactive building relationships, and that helps in the community because the other beautiful thing about this game is, we don't see a lot of incidences in the community, like crime. There's a connection here, is that build those relationships and the kids respect the community, respect the school. So I can't thank you enough for what you do.
The value of having an SRO.
Yes.
And a good SRO.
Yeah, listen, I'm great.
Chief, on top of all the hard work that you've shown us here today, also, I'm assuming that you also come in on some presentations for the school? Is that fair to say?
Yeah, you do presentations, whatever, I have some, whatever, someone wants something like, uh, I might bullying one, that one just came out this year because we had a little problem in seventh grade. So we put one together quick and.
Yeah. You come in, also, I think they, they asked you to come in for the human growth and development portion, to talk about some, statues on assault and stuff.
Sex, dude.
Yeah, I didn't come in.
He comes in on Saturdays to teach us first aid for cultures.
Yeah, you're a first aid CPR ADG instructor, a previous superintendent, Valen Goldman. Get certified in, so, because with the W A, all coaches have to have that certification, yes.
We appreciate it, Chief.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're on to, um, item F, which is the standard course for bullying. Pam?
If you want to, I don't know if we actually have one. Well, I wasn't even aware they had done one in 2020, when we had gotten our last referendum, our capital referendum, because PMA just did it based off of all the financials we send to them all the time and there were no issues. We had a great financial position, fund balance was at like 26%, so they weren't, they weren't concerned with anything. So we had one of the best ratings at A plus stable. Um, our data this year, they, they've changed, they almost a little bit where they did a, like a pros and a cons almost. Um, so the way we're, we're trending, um, they looked at our negative balances we had in our deficits. And other than the school year that just ended and the one prior, all of those deficits were spending of, uh, signed fund balance. So yes, we had deficits, but we were spending prior year subsidy funding. So those were all fine, they had no problems with any of that. But then they looked at the year ending June 23rd, 2023, and we had dipped into fund balance. So now this year, we're gonna have to dip into fund balance. So they were looking at that and that concern them. They also said, we are not going to school districts, they had a plethora that they were meeting with this year for that exact same reason. Um, they will be looking at this again for sure next year, maybe the year after that as well. So as you read through this, um, one thing I, I wanted to highlight was at, um, the bottom of the second page. If you want to go to that, uh, security and credit, yeah, right here. Um, so it says, well, the drop in reserves is a key driver to up the downgrade, which is what I was just explaining. Another factor is our view of the district's financial management assessment, which has weakened from, to standard from good. We believe the lack of proactive efforts to sustain reserves at the minimum outline in the reserve management policy, which we have at 20%, uh, supports a standard that they made. So he was very specific in saying, this is not a reflection on the district office, the business office. This is a reflection of the district as a whole, the decisions we're all making. And he also then reiterated, we are not, you know, in school districts getting this comment because it's sort of like they have to say it. We're in a situation we have no control over, I mean, when our funding drops 300 to 400,000, our spending stays the same, what do we do? How, where do we cut 400,000 dollars, you know? And we are now going to school district in that situation. So the way they laid this out is, like I said, the, the good and the bad, basically, if we do go to referendum and are successful, they will reevaluate us and pump us back up, um, from a negative, basically, um, bring us back up.
What are the different ratings you can get?
Oh goodness, I do not know all of them. I know our A plus standard where we were before was obtaining.
Right, and so what's an A?
We are right now at A negative.
Negative, like, is it A still good?
So they change them to an A stable, A is still good.
Okay, so you're like, you can get a C.
See, we're not right now, it's still good, oh yes, yes.
Okay, you got it, I just didn't know if it was like a negative, clean plus.
We, we don't, we don't want that.
We don't want it down, but still, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's helpful.
Okay, so we, so our A negative would probably go back to an A stable if we're successful and passing a referendum. So I did tell them we would not be able to fully fund in the first year, their fund balance back up to 20%. That's when he said that, and the reason there, that they'll probably look at it over the next two years as well.
Yeah.
Um, just to check that. And Jason did tell them, cause one of their questions was, and if you go to November and it fails, what are you gonna do? And I just was speechless, basically, because I don't know what we would do other than go back to referendum, which equals, you know, it equals, which is how Jason said.
We'd have to drain our fund balance.
We would drain our fund balance and.
Which would further.
Which we would basically have to be using short-term borrowing that we would have questioned if we could ever pay back. If any short-term borrowing has to be paid back by November 1st of the year.
Yeah, and they asked the question, do you envision future increases in revenue? And of course, our answer to that is, you know, even if you're looking at student increases, let's say we have an influx of students, it's three-year rolling average, which means you're not gonna see any benefit from that for multiple years. So even if we had an influx of a bunch of students, we don't see the full benefit of that.
Right.
So the, the unknown is once again, does the state, you know, look at the, at the per pupil limits and make adjustments? Who knows? Like, we're going into the second year of a binding budget next year, so nothing's gonna change.
Right, nothing will change.
But for the next two years, it's anybody's guess, you know, then the, and they reference in here about the per pupil, the, the limits, like, the revenue limit's not keeping up with the inflation and stuff, so, yeah, it's, it was hard, it was sobering. I mean, it's the reality, but the meaning was.
It's not as bad as I feared.
Yeah.
Honestly, it's not as bad as I feared.
No, and, and I think this just lends more credibility, um, if we choose to go to referendum, to the case for the community. That, you know, it's, it's part of that big picture of building a case for why this is important. I just think if we use this, it's really helpful to, like, again, in people's, like, if you asked a lot of people who might talk to me, they'd be like, well, it's okay to be a B, like, so they need to understand what the ratings need. Because I just heard you say, you don't want to be a B. Well, I mean, they'd be like, well, B is still above average, right? Like, so we need to specify what these ratings actually mean. Yeah. And what that looks like, because many people would be like, so maybe in two years you need to ask us because then we're gonna be, like, we don't want to get to a C minus, right? Like, and I don't know, like, that's important.
And then PMA assisted with this, so they, they kind of, they were on the phone call as well and they put in their five-year projection. Um, which I was pleasantly, pleasantly surprised, they showed our bill rate going down in our projections. Um, but they would also work for, they would work for us for free for the referendum because we are quiet.
That's right.
So that would be something, I will ask them, you know, give us a, you know, this, this, I sort of, you know, I, I do understand this. This is what happened, but what does a B plus mean? You know, cause if we slide more, as of right now, I would question if we ever would be able to do a capital referendum again until we have this back up to A plus stable.
Cause the interest rate.
Right, those are really important things for people to understand, because most people would be like, well, we don't have to be an A plus. Like, I mean, it's, and it, again, because they don't understand the ratings, right?
Sure.
Oh, of course they would, like, without.
Right. You're in the board of the board, you have to pay it, right?
So you touch on something that's been causing me some anxiety lately, and, because if the board elects to put a question on the ballot, you know, I was, what that means is, I have 11 weeks to make trips to the township meetings and like to try that. So I'm just getting that, like, what you're all talking about would be a part of that plan, but I can't.
Yes, and we, we talked about that at the last board meeting, that this is a shared responsibility. It should not be totally on your shoulders, Jason. Yeah, and that is a very good topic for us to have discussed when we do our board agenda.
Yes.
I guess.
And we have, we have someone we've spoke to that's given us a quote that will assist us in writing board points, like we did for a capital referendum.
Promotion.
To bullet point flyers, things that we can use as a board, as directors to take to people and tell people and put in the mail. So there, there are other avenues, we do not need to come up with all of it ourselves, the numbers we need to come up with.
And, and I will tell you, I spoke to a superintendent of a similar sized community that passed an operational referendum, uh, last week. And their child was in a basketball league that I was in, and we were talking. And she reiterated that when they did it, and they didn't have to, they had a third of the townships we do in their district, but going to all those meetings and communicating and stuff, so that was just something that we know, we need to communicate.
Yeah.
We need to be able to.
Not want to get too far off topic, so we get in trouble for talking about this.
Right, that's not a jump, right.
This will play a part in the outlook as far as borrowing money in the future and all of, all of those things, so.
I will say though, that it wasn't the agenda, referendum updates.
Right, not in this spot, it was earlier, you're right, it was.
Okay, is there any other questions on this item specifically? Um, or can we move on to number nine? Okay, very good. So number nine, that is our discussion and action items. So we have a number of policy readings. Um, as Jason previously communicated, this first one, um, A, policy 113 and 113 rule has to be, um, approved by August 1st. So have people had an opportunity to, um, oh, and the policy 113 exhibit? Um, I realize these are new updates, they did come from WASB on Friday afternoon. Um, in general, I have a fair amount of confidence in the WASB attorneys when it comes to these types of things related to federal rules and regulations. Um, I have read it quickly. I have not spent a lot of time on it. Um, let's open it up for some discussion. I just haven't read it, so I didn't have a chance to, so, but I'm, I'm comfortable if the rest of you guys read it to vote on it. I just don't feel like I can vote on it, because I haven't even read it.
I, I mean, I didn't, because this was different.
Correct.
Cause this wasn't, we didn't have this until Friday late in the day, but this is, I will just remember, like, this is federal. Like, these are federal regulations, like, we, we literally do not have a choice.
So we have, they have to update tonight.
Yeah, yeah, we do have to have something.
And then if we all digest it, feel like things have been changed. We can't do that, but I don't think there, I mean, we're not changing, like, word or something, it's probably not needed for a federal regulation.
I don't think we can change work if it's federal regulations. And again, yeah, I, I guess. Yeah, I, I guess I have a lot of confidence in the WASB attorneys putting this in a format in which, um, which is going to comply with the federal regs.
That's what we pay them for.
That's what we pay them for.
Ultimately, they don't have to respond to their rights and their decisions.
Yeah.
So, it's okay, make motion?
If you would like to, go ahead.
Yeah, make motion, except the first reading, approve updates to policy 113, 113, 113 exhibit. Will be applied to incidents involving sex discrimination and retaliation prohibited by the head on night and have a motion to have occurred on or after August 1st, 24.
So I'm only gonna ask one follow-up question about. Can we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, out, we're open for discussion. So are we only approving the first reading and this is coming back?
No, it's because we first reading and approval, because it says, otherwise we're gonna, I, I was just saying this, we would have to have another meeting.
Right.
In July, because this has to be approved by August 1st, so it would have to be prior to our August board meeting. So if it's not, that's why we put the first, our first reading and approval tonight for this portion. The rest of them are not as time sensitive. This one is, they said August 1st, this has to be approved by your school board. These are federal guidelines.
Okay, so is the suggested motion appropriate? Accept the first reading and approve updates?
Yes.
That is, okay. So this is a final reading?
Yeah, one-time reading.
This is a one-timer?
And I never want to say that it, like, we have no control, but truly in this situation with a federal government, we don't have control over it, like.
Is there any further discussion on the motion and the second? Then I would, um, ask for all in favor to signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Is there any extension? I'm, I mean, I haven't read it, so I don't. Okay. So motion carries? But I don't have a problem with you guys approving it at all, because I don't know that I have a problem with it, I just. Okay. So the motion carries? So the motion carries with a vote of four to zero with one extension. Um, on to B, um, this is another one where we have to act tonight. It is Policy 313 exhibit, the annual notice of academic standards.
We don't have to act on it, but there's only a change of the date.
Yeah, the date was always changed, and it's a yearly thing that we have to do, so the board would not have to do that tonight.
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading and approve the updates to the Policy 313 exhibit.
Is there a second? Okay, that means you are, that means we're going to do it tonight.
Correct.
Great, great. Eric Delandia, is there any discussion? Then, um, I, uh, would call for a vote, all in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carry. On to C. Um, here we have, um, Again, things that relate to the state statutes, 120.12, section 13, section B. Uh, the following academic standard shall be in effect.
So we have no changes to that other than the dates.
So it's just an annual review.
This is just
Yes. Yeah, it's in annual 24, 25 school. Yep.
And this is something we can approve tonight?
Yep, this is just our annual notice to the public.
Okay.
That's what we're using for academic standards. It'll be our annual notice dependence.
Is there, is there someone who would like to make a motion to approve reading all of this coverage for the public that are watching?
I'll make a motion to approve pursuant up to section 120.12, section 13, section B of Wisconsin state statutes To acknowledge that the following academic standards shall be in effect in the school district of Pittsville for 24, 25 school year. Wisconsin academic standards for English language, including reading and writing, Wisconsin standards for math, Wisconsin standards for science, and Wisconsin standards for social studies, including geography and history. And that said, academic standards shall Constitute the board adopted standards that are required under section 11830, section 1G, section A Of the state statute, and that the administration will provide parent guardians of district students with notice of the board adopted standards. Policy 313 exhibit that we just approved, that are in effect for the 2024, 2025 school year.
Thank you, Jill. Is there a second?
I'll say.
It's been moved and seconded, um, to approve this. Long thing. Any further discussion? Then all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carry. D. Uh, now we have some first Reading and approval of updates to Policy 411. Uh, equal employment opportunities, Policy 411 rule, student discrimination complaint procedures, Policy 411 exhibit one, public notification of student non-discrimination policy, and new policy 411 exhibit two, discrimination complaint form.
So when I look at it, it looks again like we're just changing it to Danielle's name.
Danielle's names, updating the contact, which is why we asked for approval. There's no
And the exhibit two is new, though?
Yeah.
Correct, which is, yes.
The complaint.
511 exhibit.
Exhibit two, and is this form the uniform that WASB gave us?
Straight from the WASB.
Yeah.
Okay. What do we currently use?
Is this
There's language, we didn't have it for
We didn't have it for
No. There's language about the process you utilize.
Yes, sure.
It makes it a lot more streamlined.
Absolutely.
Chris, did you?
I did. This form was newly created statewide, or just recently, or was this created a while back? I see a date on here of our date, but there was no form being, like, I'm curious, other schools use this form?
Yeah, I don't, this was, we sent this to us as their recommended form that we use, and I, I can probably dig and find that answer. I don't know how new the form itself is.
I would trust that the form incorporates all of the elements of what was then approved.
I think that's why they recommended, actually, it's a little more adept as far as collecting that information, so that was why we recommended it was made to include the form.
What is the procedure after this form is received by the school district?
It would go to, um, Danielle now. It goes to the compliance officer, which is the director of student services, and then The determination is made. So if there's any situation that may arise that it could qualify, it would go to Danielle, and then she makes a determination. And if it doesn't meet the requirements, it gets kicked back to like a normal investigation that you would do by your building in the district. Does that make sense?
Are there statewide mandates for reporting for you then? With this form? So upon receipt of, receiving this form, you have a mandate to notify Probably DPI or something?
Yeah, reading through this, there's quite a streamlined process, but then I will also be taking my own training. The training that will be provided is currently in works of modules, are not ready yet to accommodate the new law. But I will be taking that with me.
Chris, I should have that, oops, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, is this federal or state?
Federal.
Federal. That's, okay, thank you.
Chris, I should have that answer, I'm going to dig it in for you, is that I actually believe the only report that's made is if it's determined it is actually, like, simply, Um, it has to be determined that there was a viable complaint.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yep.
But I will get an answer, correct, that's, that's correct, yes. Correct.
Okay.
I'll get the answer to that.
Thank you.
Um, is there a motion of a second?
I'll make a motion to accept first reading and approve updates to Policy 411. 411 rule, 411 exhibit one, and new policy 411 exhibit two.
I'll say.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, is there any other questions or discussion? If not, um, let's vote. Um, favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carry. Item D. First reading and approval of updates to Policy 511, equal employment opportunity, Policy 511 rule, Employment discrimination and harassment complaint process, And new policy 511 exhibit, complaint of employment discrimination, harassment, workplace bullying, Retaliation, or other violations of school board policy 511 or 512. The new exhibit, um, is this also just really
Well, they changed, yeah, yeah, there were some changes, like the, the appeal date changed, that was interesting, that they went from 10 days to appeal to 21 days To the administrator for any determination, that would be on step two on page two.
From page two.
Uh, pa- page two of 511 rule.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah, page two, second paragraph, step two. They changed the appeal, you know, from 10 days to 21 days to appeal any findings.
And I'm looking at the, the new exhibit, new policy 511 exhibit, which, which is the form, right? And I'm assuming that's similar to the previous new exhibit in that it's just a matter of having a form for it.
That's accurate.
Instead of a procedure.
That's accurate.
Okay. I only have one question, and again, I mean, my attorney gave this to us, so I'm guessing it's fine, but Um, do we show our insurance company these forms at all? And the only reason I ask that question is because All of our investigation and incident reports that we have, our insurance company has us put a disclaimer on the bottom, which Doesn't allow it to be, like, it's internal collection of information, it's not something that actually can be litig- Litigated, and I don't, it might not be relevant, I just didn't know, and, and again, it's coming from the attorney, so I'm guessing I, I don't know if they're equal or relevant, but we actually have, M3 actually puts language on our Investigation forums, so that there, we is
Always.
Yeah, I mean, so I just didn't know if we asked, I just didn't know if we asked our insurance company to look at these, and if there was anything around. I, I don't know.
No.
Because once you start to document stuff in a formal way, it becomes a public record that, but maybe it already, I don't know, I guess enough about this.
This is, I haven't seen this, so I can't answer that, so I know our, I have not spoke to our, um, agents at all regarding that, so.
I would assume that the insurance companies would receive copies of our, all of our policies and procedures of some sort, because it's something that's, they would need a reference. I mean, it's available, you know what I'm saying?
Right, everything would be
Right, it's, it's all public.
Right.
They do have a very lengthy questionnaire that we need to go through.
Yes.
But to have these specific forms looked at by them, no, we have not.
So my knee-jerk reaction would be this, is that like our legal counsel reviews our policies, and then WASB is, is, so from the insurance side, I'd be more concerned from the legal, Like, our lawyers, our legal counsel should tell us What we should have, like, they would be the ones recommending that we should do, like, what you're talking about, rather than the insurance company Doing like an audit or a review, if that makes sense, like, I, I've said before, like, WASB, it's not blind faith, but WASB, like, the board, We, we have services through WASB that they have people review these and stuff, so I guess the answer would be no, we, I'm not aware of that. I don't know if they work in conjunction with insurance companies, not necessarily, I'm pretty
Right, I mean, and the reason an insurance company wants to take a look at it is because if you are litigated against, they're the ones on the hook paying the The bill, right? Like, so that's why, that's their skin in the game, right, is, and these seem to be Collecting data that could be litigated, right? Like, so I just didn't know if there was, maybe it's not relevant in the school-related Fashion, I just know on similar-looking forms that I have had experience with in different, in a different field, Our insurance company wants a disclaimer at the bottom, that this is not, uh, it's a In a sense, a data-collecting tool, like, it's not an official document, so it can't be used in litigation.
But that's a request from your, from the insurance company.
Correct.
That's not a request from your company to the insurance.
Oh, correct, it's the insurance company, because the insurance company is going to pay the bill if, if, right, if something is, right? So they want to protect you, that's their job, is to protect you and protect probably themselves, I mean, pay, right? And protect you. So I just didn't know if that is relevant at all in this, because again, once you start to create a formal form, Now you have Formal form that, but I also don't think they'd probably give it to us if this isn't
Yeah, and I think because of the federal reporting mandate, I don't even know if, like, even if the insurance company said we prefer you add this, it may be in violation of, like, with a, as a public school.
Sure.
We have to mandatorily report determinations, so I don't, like, I'm not saying this for sure to them, but I, I think we may be held to A different bar as far as the reporting piece, because we're a public school district, I, I would guess, that would be my answer, but I'll, I'll dig into that a little bit.
Yeah, and I don't know that it means we can't approve it, I just think, I mean, I think we can approve the form, I just would want to make sure that there should be a disclaimer on the form. Because it's collecting a lot of information, like, even, like, identify the relief or remedy that the school district will do to resolve that, that's like, Um, That could be some You could be reluctant to put things on the form and kind of what you're finding and looking to resolve, because in a sense, you're sharing More than you would have to share and putting more things out there. I, I, I don't know, but I don't have a problem with the form, I just didn't know if there's any of them.
Um, is this considered a public document?
Well, it
Of course.
Anything can be public, they could do an open records request, but we would be able to adapt private information or decline based upon Information that would
Be a personal now and then.
Yes, yeah, so if there was personally identified information, we could, we, anytime we get an open records request, we have our legal counsel review And it tell us, like, what, give us guidance as to what's, what's applicable to an open records request, and this would be, we, someone couldn't just request this, they would have to make a Open records request, and I would guess this would be denied. Uh, I don't believe, like, this specific information, there would be too much detailed information to qualify under an open records request.
But could it be subpoenaed?
Of course.
Sure, anything that releases it, yes, absolutely, even if we didn't put a disclaimer, it still could get subpoenaed.
Okay, so my next question is, um, is, could we approve this tonight? I know we, we've done things in the past where we've approved it, and we had, we've left open the option of an incidental Addition to it. Would this qualify for something like this if you found out through your, through checking things out, Jason?
Yeah.
That we should have something on there, could we add that disclaimer at the bottom?
Yeah, I mean, I would ask WASB, what I would do is I would ask WASB, like, that one rule we had talked about in your, um, the search policy. Is, we communicated with them, but then reached out to Tony, and of course, we found a happy medium to say yes, we can add this, but, so, so, yes. We can make changes right here.
Okay. Um, I, yeah, could you tell me, have we had a motion for this? No, we haven't, thank you. Would anyone like to move forward?
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading and approve updates to Policy 511, 511 rule, and new policy 511 exhibit.
Is there a second?
I'll say, can I have a motion approved?
Thank you, Rick. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Item F, 2023, 24 budget revisions.
I, well, we have one.
Yes.
Only the one since, um, October, and that was just, uh, mismatch of account numbers, I just said it revised, so when I submitted the budget, it just didn't, like, being difficult, so.
That's good, and they're really small.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 budget revisions as presented.
I'll say.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2023, 2024 budget revisions. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carry. We're on to item 10, legislative updates. While everyone's out campaigning, Um, although we may get some more requests for visits.
Yeah.
We'll have to see. Um, and in that case, Jason, if a legislator wishes to visit, you'll
Share with the board and
Right, and give us an opportunity to participate.
So Donna Rosar and John Spiros is, are, are the two that are
They're on
Right, for the seat that Pittsville's in on the assembly side. On the senate side, it's
On the senate side, there is, um, well, Pat Tustin.
But it's not tested.
Right, it, the, um, as of January, it will be Senator Corey Townshick.
Oh.
Corey was at the, he was one who had expressed he's going to be reaching out for a, a visitor, and as soon as I hear something back from him, I will, yeah, waiting to know.
And he will just take over the area, he won't be going against someone for, like, it will be the next election that he, okay, got it, okay, thanks.
In the meantime, until January, our state representative, we're still in the Senate, our state representative is Nancy Van der Meer. So that would be the office to contact if anyone has issues.
Got it.
Okay, and I think it's important to note that with the redistricting, actually, the school district is not all in the same district.
Correct.
And, yeah. So, it gets complicated. Item 11, uh, public comments. Doesn't look like we have any members of the public here, so move on to agenda item 12, our future items.
The handbooks will be coming, uh, as I indicated to board, uh, the new administrators are reviewing the handbooks, they've actually already started making some notes and comments, and they'll be with their leadership teams. Those will come in August, so we appreciate the patience while that happens, so they can review them.
Um, safety plan updates.
That those will be uh August or September as part of our annual. It's part of that compliance that we have to do with our our uh the the office of school safety as far as like our training reports that we do for our drills and stuff like that. So that'll be, um, there's no, depending on how hefty the August agenda is with the potential some discussions that are going to be taking place in maybe September.
Okay.
But the handbooks will come in August regardless.
Okay. Are there any suggestions for other future agenda items?
Just to put the child care, I mean, I said.
Uh, yeah, and that will be on August, yes, as well.
Is there a blood again book? Are there two or just those?
We.
That one's been done already.
We already, we already did that. We did that two, yeah, Mark had those changes. So that was by the, yep, that was two, two weekends ago, I think.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
If there are no other suggestions, um, I would entertain a motion to return.
Make a motion to return. I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion carried. We are adjourned at 8:11 PM. How's it like that? It's white hour.
8:00.
8:00.